Go ahead and call the hearing to order. We have our tax rate hearing first. First item is the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for the August 30th, 2022 tax rate hearing as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have tax rate hearing. We are electronically taking minutes tonight, so.
For the first time.
For the first time.
And me of all people. Okay, and we all approved.
Okay.
So then we stayed.
Save.
Okay.
There we go.
Final resolution. Okay.
Dr. Fleek, did you want to go through your presentation?
Yes. Okay. So I always start the presentation off by talking a little bit about the requirements for public school finance. State statute, chapter 165, requires that public schools have four funds. So we have the incidental fund, the teacher fund, the debt service fund, and the capital projects fund. Section 165.011 requires that our debt service fund be maintained in a separate bank account. And I also did link a copy of the Missouri Finance Accounting Manual. If you can't sleep, it's a great read. It's a very thorough document that goes through school finance. So breaking down the funds, the incidental fund, sometimes called the general fund, is our fund one. This basically is where most of our expenses go. General supplies, anything that's less than $1,000, and any of our non-certified employees. So like our cooks, our custodians, their salary and benefits go in fund one. Fund two is called the teacher fund, also known as special fund. This is where we pay all of our teachers' salaries and benefits from. And we also make tuition payments to other districts. Those tuition payments would be if we have a student go to like a juvenile detention center, be placed in a residential center that is run by another school district, or a foster student that may be placed in another district, we pay that tuition. Fund three is our debt service fund. This is our long-term debt, so any bond issues that we run, this is where those payments and those revenues go into. Fund four is our capital projects fund. So this is facility acquisition, construction, lease purchase, principal, and interest. So we're getting ready later this evening. LJ Hart and Company is here. They're going to talk about the first $10 million for Prop SG. So the expenses for Prop SG, as we start accruing them this year, will come out of fund four. So that's just a brief summary of the funds. So we are required to put the tax rate hearing notice out. This is the copy of the legal notice that went out. You are supposed to make sure it is in print. The law does not take into account social media because it was created before social media was a thing. So we post the tax rate hearing in the Herald on our website, under our live feed, our social media accounts. We post it in district office, Bloomsdale Elementary, St. John Elementary, the middle school, high school, county courthouse, city hall. We send it to Sun Times, which then goes out to KSGM. And I don't know if it was on channel, is it 990 still?
I don't know.
Okay. I don't know if it, I assume since we sent it to Don Pritchard, it would probably be there. So the tax rate history, you have five years of history here. So for this year, doing the state auditor's calculation. Let me check and see what slide I'm on. Doing the state auditor's calculation, which you, I have, it's a complicated formula. And you input the information and the calculation automatically tells you what you can set your operating levy at. And when we do the calculation, there are two tax rates that we calculate. It's the operating levy, which funds fund one, fund two, and fund four. And it's the debt service levy. That is a separate calculation. We send information to LJ Hart and Company, worked with Mrs. Wegman, and she sends back what the projections are on Form C, so we put that information in. And that generates the debt service fund amount. And we did put the Prop SG logo there because as we promised the taxpayers, we are not increasing the tax rate in the debt service. That is staying at 44 cents even with the passage of Prop SG. The slight increase of .0046 comes from the operating levy. As part of the numbers that you have to input, one of those numbers is the state assessed property number. That comes from DESI, and we get that in the spring before we do the tax calculation, June and August. So the number that we received last year on the projection that DESI thought we would get was about $830,000. We actually received 812. So we received less money last year than we were supposed to in those funds. So that has impacted and is part of the reason that we have a slight increase in our operating levy for this year. And we'll talk, I'll talk more about all of this individually in just a second. So this is just an excerpt from the legal notice. I want to point out, I zoomed in a little bit more. The assessed valuation last year was $801 million. The assessed valuation this year is 832, and I'm rounding. So our increase in assessed valuation was $31 million, which when we sent in our tax forms for the state auditor to review, her reply back was the calculations looked correct. However, our new construction, and I know it's, it's hard to see on there. Is that on there?
Down at the bottom.
It's down at the bottom. Our new construction was 8 million. And, sorry, I have really bad eyesight. So the comment back from the state auditor was that new construction seemed to grow more than 20%. It was high because this is a non-reassessment year. But in talking to the assessor's office, that number is correct. We have had a lot of new construction in our community. So that is some of the increase that we're seeing too. But our assessed valuation in the community is much higher. And then I have the breakdown here just of the tax rate. Did I go backwards? Yep. Just of the tax rate. So this compares 2122 to 2223. Looking at 2122, if we would have received 100% at the collection rate, we would have received $27.2 million. The actual collection rate for 2122 was actually 66.088. So our collection on local taxes last year was 17.9 million. So nowhere close to the 27. And that is due, majority due to the Lafarge Wholesome tax protest. And I have those numbers I'll share with you in just a little bit. The 2022-23 100% collection rate total is projected to be 28.3 million because the assessed valuation is higher and our tax rate is just slightly larger. But we are not going to assume a 66% collection rate for this year because Lafarge Wholesome has filed a protest on their taxes and so has Mississippi Lime Company. Mississippi Lime is protesting the same items that wholesome is protesting. So we're talking the kills, the crushers, that type of big equipment. When the Board of Equalization was held, Mississippi Lime came in, did not say much. They're filing the protest, waiting to see what happens with wholesome. They want the ability to be able to reclaim some of their tax dollars if wholesome should win. I don't know that they're going to actively fight it. I think they're going, there's something they can file where they just get pushed back with the state tax commission. So we do have that that we're facing too. We're losing some funds there, and I'll give you numbers on the next slide. So the difference between the 2122 actual collection and the 64% projection with the slight increase in our tax rate is about $130,000. That would just be the new local revenue that we get. And with that, you know, I'll point out that, you know, some people see that as a lot of money, but you know, the school district's budget is about $30 million. So with those funds, what we've had to do is we hired, how we would use them, if you would, is we've hired a new kindergarten teacher at Bloomsdale Elementary to reduce class sizes because they were so big. We took the door lock system off of Prop SG because we could not get parts and we were concerned that they weren't going to work at all this year. So we pulled that off, found a better solution, and we're spending $68,111 on the door lock system. We also pulled, you'll see on our long-range plan, there were some windows at St. John Elementary on the interior playground, do you know what I mean? Inside the building. We had put those on the long-range plan because they were getting really bad. But as Davey, as our maintenance guys looked at them last year, they had deteriorated to the point that they had to be replaced. So we worked with Winger in Perryville and were able to pull those off and get some new windows installed this summer. So that, that should take care of some of those issues. And the other thing that this board has been talking about is hiring an additional school resource officer. It is something that we need. Our current school resource officer, Kristi Clark, has been doing all of the DARE education at St. John Elementary. And the county sheriff's department has been taking care of Bloomsdale Elementary. With this person, if we can make it happen, and I'll know more next month when I present the amended budget to you and will have a better idea. With this person, we would anticipate having them teach DARE in both elementaries. So we currently have six fifth grade classes. And next year, because we have two sections, we went down to two sections at Bloomsdale. Next year it would be seven sections. So DARE is a 10-week program and it would consume and require a lot of time out of one person. We would also anticipate having this person check in and be at Bloomsdale Elementary a little bit more than Kristi can because most of her work is here on this campus. But during the spring, it gets really busy. And so this person could take up some of the workload from Officer Clark and our social worker Stephanie Gack, who are doing attendance checks, investigations, providing resources to families. Anything I'm missing? Okay. So I know that's a lot, and 130,000 won't cover it all, but it's on our radar. The next slide, I wanted to break down that 64% collection rate. So you see at the top that yellow 100% collection rate, the 28.3 million. My best estimate on Lafarge Wholesome, 8.6 maybe, last year. So for 2122, the R2 portion in escrow for the wholesome protest is $8.8472,623.91. That is the total amount sitting in the escrow account with our county collector.
So once this 8.6 goes in, there's 13 million, I'm sorry, 17.
And then the estimated 700,000 from Mississippi Lime's protest, yes?
So nearly 18 million could be sitting in escrow.
Correct.
And the expenses, the legal expenses that are, that is that come out of that 18 million? Or is that a separate line item that we're currently going to be facing as we're the biggest taxing entity?
I, can you say that again?
So the legal expense that we're going to face with the, where is that coming from? Is that coming from, out of this 18 million that's going to help escrow? Or is it going to be a different line item expense?
The legal fees, I'm going to talk about those in just a second.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I think it's maybe the next slide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So there's the estimates for Lafarge Wholesome and Mississippi Lime. So our anticipated distributable taxes is about 18.9 million. There is a 3% collection fee that goes, that 849,000 goes to the county. That's a 3% every year. So, so there is the projected amount for 2223 using that 64% collection from all those calculations above, less the actual tax collected. So again, there's that $130,187. Okay? And then legal fees, so I put this slide on here. St. John R2, best guess, estimate is we receive about 75% of the local taxes. This means in the Lafarge Wholesome legal battle, we will pay 75% of the legal fees. For this coming school year, in the September amendment, I'm going to put about $450,000. I don't know if that is the correct amount. And we may have to do an amendment in February to increase that. I do know that wholesome's hearing date with the tax commission is in May of '23. And right now wholesome and the assessor's office, or the county, are in the, what they call the information exchange, meaning, you know, the lawyers are asking for things and they're passing information.
So the, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
The taxes that were protested in 2021, 2021 taxes that were protested in 2022, the first hearing is in May of 2023.
That is when it's supposed to be, but our best guess is it's probably going to be a little bit longer. It's probably going to get pushed back just because I think, I mean, if you think about it, there's a lot of information that needs to be exchanged and found over the past 10 years. So that's our best guess. So I pulled some old files from Dr. Lindsay and Dr., or Mr. Stewart, and was going through them. And I've always talked that I think the legal fees would be 2 to 3.5 million. And that was being conservative, thinking we could resolve this rather quickly. When I pulled those documents, I found some projections and I increased that 3.5 on this document. And we'll start talking about legal fees could be somewhere between 2 and 4.5 million. So what we've done, and I know a lot of people are curious how we're using our Esser funds. We're bringing in the majority, not all. We are using our Esser funds to fund assessment, to do classroom reduction, all of the things that is, are appropriate and allowable by the federal government. But we're tying those funds to salaries and benefits that we've paid with local funds. And then we're allowing the Esser money that does come in to replace those local funds to build some balances, hoping to be able to build some of that 2 to 4.5 million in order to pay these legal fees if it goes all the way through the court system.
Do you know what we've spent this past budget year?
Yes, I have those numbers here.
Okay.
Last year, and this number is not totally far just wholesome. It's all of our legal fees. So anytime we have a situation that I need to call the district's attorney about and work through or have them create a document or someone in the situation, this number includes that. But last year, our legal fees were 245,900, rounding out $5. And the year before that, they were 63,225. And I do remember we had a board meeting. I think it was Mr. McDaniel pointed out that there were legal fees last year. They were like 120? It was like a paint, it was a request from the county.
Sure.
I don't remember the exact number. I didn't look that up, so. But that's just some information and how we're trying to prepare if it should go all the way through and be able to help the county. So next, I want to move on and look at the debt service. So as we promised the voters, the debt service for Prop SG is staying at 44 cents. And if you look at the very top, it says maximum calculated rate. When you do the calculation on the debt service, the maximum rate we could set the debt service at is .4567. And again, we're rolling it back to 44, so we're rolling it back .0167. So as promised, and this is just an excerpt we pulled off of the Prop SG page, we are not raising taxes due to the debt service. We are keeping it as 44 cents as promised. So what do we do with that debt service money? Well, that's the voters-approved Prop SG. So these were the big eight items on Prop SG. The early childhood center, St. John Elementary, and you see the items, middle school, Bloomsdale High School, athletic facilities, and bathrooms at the high school. And I did strike out number eight because we pulled that and are doing it now. So we're hoping the 20 million can do all of that, so. Additional facility projects, this is on our long-range facility plan. So these are items in five to 15 years. I struck through the update windows or upgrade windows at St. John Elementary because those became a priority. I also put a note behind the barn at Yanks South. That structure is becoming a safety issue and it's becoming a hazard. I mean, it's, it's falling down. So we have met with someone who is interested in taking it down. And if we can take it down safely and then maybe turn the rest of that into a parking lot for now, we need the parking at Yanks. So we're going to explore that some more. We're waiting on information back from the person that looked at it so I can share it with you. But you see there's all kinds of different items on there for each building, so. So if, if we, let's say wholesome and the county settle, I don't know, in six months from now, and we get that money, what we would do is take that money, because it's one-time money, and apply it to some of these long-range plans. Actually, we would probably have the long-range facility committee get back together, review the plan, see if there's anything that came up, and then use them to address items like this on our long-range plan. All right? And then I created these documents, and this is on Board Duck, so anyone has access to it. So what I'll do is pull up this residential comparison. I don't know if you can see it very well. So this is for residential property only, and these calculations are for St. John's tax rate only. There are other taxing entities in the community. I have the list, and I was going to run through them. So all of the taxing entities in the community, state of Missouri has a tax rate, the county, the road district, ambulance, library, county health, mental health, seniors, citizens, Senate Bill 40, the hospital, and the school district. I don't have information on what those groups have set their tax rate at. So if any of them increase their tax rate, that is not taken into account on this document. This is only for St. John's tax rate, okay? So if you own $100,000 residential property with the new tax rate, your taxes would go up 87 cents. If you own a house, a residential property that's 250,000, your taxes would go up $2.18. So like I said, I did these calculations and had some people look at them. So I have the residential calculations, there's agricultural and commercial. I did not do calculations for vehicles. That's a little bit higher rate, it's 33.3%. And these calculations do not take into account if you improved your home, like you put new siding, or you put new doors, or you put new windows, or you added on. All of those things are going to increase the assessed value of your home on their own. Okay?
Dr. Fleek, I think it's important to note that that tax rate also includes both the operating funding and the debt service levy.
That is correct. And then this document's out there for everyone to see too. It's just a comparison I put together because, you know, I had some questions. Well, really, if the board would roll it back to last year's debt service, you know, what's the difference? So with, if the board would approve the 3.4071 tax rate, as I said earlier, it's $130,178. If the board would roll back to the 3.3971 tax rate using the new assessed valuation, it would be an increase of $105,672. So that would be a difference of $24,506. So, you know, if you think about all the homes and businesses and agricultural property, that kind of goes back to what I just showed you on residential. That increase is very small, even on bigger pieces of property. Okay. So I'm just putting that up there again, but I'm really going to transition to this slide. This slide has the proposed tax rate. And then on the right side, it has the tax rates in the region. So this is for 2122. We won't be able to create this document and do the comparison for this year's tax rate until November. There are some counties that have, like St. John, that have to set their tax rate by September 1st. And there are other counties that don't have to set their tax rate until October 1st. So that's why the information doesn't come out until November. But when you look at this list, you see that we are pretty close. Well, we're second from the bottom. Perryville is below us. And I, just my best guess, it's probably going to stay pretty similar. We're going to stay pretty much in the same spot for this coming year. I would be surprised if anyone lowered their tax rate and went below us. Okay? And that is all of the information that I have to present. So do you have any questions?
I just want to say thank you. I don't think we get that kind of presentation. Well, I should say that we have gotten that kind of presentation over the previous few years, but in my 11 years, it's quite extensive and I don't see, and I'm not throwing them under the bus, but not all taxing entities go through this kind of presentation to set the tax rate. So I appreciate it very much.
No problem.
The Herald reported that the city's lasted less than 15 minutes for tax rate hearing, and they approved several items too in their agenda, so I kudos as well.
Thank you. School finance is very complicated.
Are there any questions from the board at this time?
No, Dr. Fleek did a great job.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public on the tax rate hearing? Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry, Ms. Otto, our communications director has asked.
Okay. I just want to say thank you. Our admin, our administration, our board members are such good stewards of the finances around here. And I have seen and read so many things in so many places, you have as well. So thank you very much, and thank you for explaining it, taking your time to explain this. I know you've spent tons of time on this, and it's, it makes it easier for me to understand. And then also when I go into the public, I can kind of help spread that news too. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Oh, I thought you were. Any other comments from the board or questions for Dr. Fleek?
I have a comment. It's important to note that in even number year, if you voluntarily roll back, you cannot, it's going to reduce your ceiling for future years. So you got to be cognizant of that as we're in an even number year. And then the other thing, I did extensive research on this. Our school district and the entire state of Missouri, for in previous, the previous tax year, we were the 83rd lowest school district in terms of tax rate. I'd have over approximately 500 school districts. So we fall in the bottom 20% of. So we fall in the bottom 20% of the tax rate. There are some schools that are taxing 6.5%. So I think it just shows how fiscally responsible that we are as a school. I think that it's also important that, I think there's an understanding that teachers are underpaid, and if we're going to cut our budget even more, how are we going to continue to ensure that our kids are getting a quality education? So I think it's just really important to be aware of that, so.
I would just also point out that our debt service remained the exact same amount from 1985 to 2018. That's 33 years before it was slightly increased. There was 133% inflation over those 33 years. So what cost a dollar in 1985 cost $2.33 in 2018, and we held that rate. So it has went up slightly since then, but we have now maintained it for another five years at the rate that it's at. And the inflation, as everyone is very aware of, continues to rise extremely this year. So I appreciate the efforts of containing the costs, and as Josh pointed out, the fact that we have one of the lowest rates in the state, obviously one of the lowest rates in the mineral area, and we produce, and, I mean, I'm going to get on my soapbox, we produce and offer a tremendous product here. And that product, there's these buildings and the students that come out of them. I think the teachers, the administration, the custodial staff, the cooks, the bus drivers, they do a wonderful job, and we pay them well, though I'd love to pay them more. And Lori wants to listen to some music. That was probably my signal. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
On the fact that the custodial staff, how they keep our schools so clean, you get schools coming over here all the time talking about how nice ours are, and then we go, I just wanted to bring up, like, somebody with the property value of $500,000 would be $4.37. That's $500,000.
Residential, correct.
Yes, residential. Yes, yes, I'm sorry, residential. And $100,000 is only 0.7 cents. We spend that on a soda. I mean, some people won't I do all kinds of things. But I mean, I didn't want to make a joke out of that, but, you know, when we're talking about that kind of money and what we get, it's amazing. Thank you guys so much.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
One last comment, and I'll be quiet as well. I did extensive research on this for a while, longer than I'd be able to admit. I found this excerpt on the Rockwood School District here in Missouri, kind of helps explain. It says, "If the assessed valuation increases by more than the Consumer Price Index, which is inflation, the tax rate will decrease." This is commonly referred to as the Hancock Amendment. If the assessed valuation less new construction improvements is less than the Consumer Price Index and inflation, the tax rate may increase. So the State Orders Office used 7.0% for their inflation rate, so that kind of explains why the tax rate did what it did.
Yes.
Still incremental as to the overall, very much, the grand scheme of things, so.
And that was a big jump.
Yeah.
You can tell them if I have to.
Yes. Yes.
If there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the tax rate hearing.
A motion to adjourn the 2021, yeah, that's right. Tax rate hearing in the St. John County R2 district in transition to the regular open session meeting. Should it say 2022?
I'm looking.
Oh, yeah. I might have missed that.
We're going to go with 22.
I will fix that right now.
Okay. Let me go back. I can make a comment here.
Yes.
We're trying to keep up with our students. All of us.
And while we wait, I'll add, we transitioned to Board Docs in May of 2021. So if you ever want to see anything in open session, just Google St. John Board Docs, and it will take you to our website, and it has all of our minutes and agendas for all of the board meetings since we started using this in May. I think it was May. It was May, May of 2021.
I can always go back and modify it, too.
It is, yes. Yes, it is, Bailey.
So I have a motion to adjourn. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That was at 7:35. Session order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda are the Board of Education norms, which are attached to Board Docs for your reference. And the next item is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda of the August 30th, 2022 Regular Open Session Meeting as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the list is the MSBA Monthly Report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of August. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the opening of a new school year in Missouri. Our public schools will start the new year this month with great anticipation, but in an environment that continues to be challenging. Among those challenges are COVID-19 remaining with us, school districts throughout the state facing serious issues with teacher recruitment and retention, and many students dealing with mental health issues. Yet, school boards, administrators, and teachers continue to do the work of educating the 900,000 students in Missouri's public schools. The National Superintendent of the Year, Missouri's own Dr. Curtis Kane, told board members and administrators attending MSBA's Igniting Great Ideas Summit, "The work may be grueling at times, but it's worth it." He also said, "In the current environment, it's critical that board members and administrators continue to tell the story of public education."
And others are filling the void in terms of the narrative, in terms of the story of what we are doing. We have to get back to our roadshows, addressing multiple audiences, getting out in the road, on the road, pressing flesh with handshakes, talking to people, sharing factual stories in terms of what's happening within our schools. Not the stuff that people hear on cable news, what's actually happening in our schools, and amplifying what already exists.
Kane also said, "It's always important to keep kids at the center of all decision-making." Dr. Kane serves as superintendent in the Rockwood School District in suburban St. Louis. That theme of focusing on what's best for all kids was echoed by MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall during her remarks to the recent MSBA Delegate Assembly.
You stayed laser-focused on what you need to do for your children and for our children. Those 900,000 students belong to all of us, and we have an equal moral and ethical obligation to make sure that when they finish their education system here in Missouri, they are prepared for their futures.
Randall thanked board members for their service during some of the most challenging times they've ever faced. The State Work Group, charged with studying what's known as competency-based learning, has completed its work and issued its recommendations to the State Board of Education. The idea is that students should advance in their education based on their mastery of skills and expectations, not based on seat time. One of the co-facilitators of the group, Dr. Mike Fulton, presented a session on the issue during MSBA's recent Igniting Great Ideas Summit, and he described the competency-based learning approach.
Public schools exist for a reason, is to provide access for every child in our state to a great education that gets them ready for their future. Competency-based learning is not a program, it's a mindset that you use to solve complex problems, that empowers students to take control of their lives, and be college, career, and workforce-ready in ways that are customized to them.
The recommendations of the Success Ready Students Work Group include designing a competency-based assessment system for students, designing a competency-based accreditation system for school districts, and expanding business-to-education partnerships. Nominations are open for the Carter D. Award Excellence in Advocacy Award. The award, named for MSBA's former executive director, is presented each year to a local board member who excels at advocating for public education. Nominations for the award, which will be presented at next year's Legislative Forum, are being accepted through August 31st. There's still time to submit proposed changes to MSBA's advocacy positions. Those position statements express to legislators, policymakers, the public, and the media where MSBA stands on issues like school board elections, charter school expansion, vouchers, and many others. Delegates will vote on proposed changes at the Fall Delegate Assembly this November in Kansas City. The deadline to submit new or revised position statements is August 31st. Join us in Kansas City at the Kansas City Convention Center, November 3rd through the 5th, for MSBA's annual conference, in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators. This year's conference will include three general sessions, including keynote speaker Olympian Jackie Joyner-Kersee, more than 90 concurrent sessions, a one-day education expo, and much more. Registration information is available on the MSBA website. You can also register to attend the 2022 Midwest School Safety Summit, to be held November 2nd and 3rd in Kansas City. This event is designed to provide information for those who govern and work in K-12 schools, colleges, and universities, as well as law enforcement officials and others working with MSBA-member districts. The Midwest School Safety Summit is presented by MSBA's Center for Education Safety and the Safe and Sound Schools Organization. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Mr. Gettiger pointed out politely that we didn't do a roll call, so I want to go ahead and do that.
Well, with the new system, when you come in, she automatically takes it.
She attends attendance.
Yes. So, yes, before she, when she starts the meeting, she takes it. Yes. Yes, she records it in the minutes as you're all coming in.
But I want to make a step.
If somebody has to leave, we'll keep track.
I did want to point out one thing. It talked about MSBA CES, Center for Education Safety, and I wanted to, and I'm looking at Dr. Mercer, because Dr. Mercer serves on that committee and does great work. So he's a representative for Southeast Missouri and brings great ideas and keeps us in check and up to date here. So I wanted to point that out, because I was not sure that you were aware of that. Does a great job.
Awesome. Thank you.
And that gentleman who spoke, he's retiring tomorrow.
Oh.
He's going to be sad like yesterday.
I don't think Grant, uh, break up.
That's how he looks. Even when he's not talking, he's just smiling.
All right. Next, we have the Consent Agenda.
And if you don't mind, I will point out on 3F, we've always had program evaluations in the consent agenda. We have them every month on a program. I think there's a board policy or procedure that talks about what we do every month. But with the rollout of MSIP 6, we are in the pilot and have had our comprehensive school improvement plan looked at and scored a 15 out of 15. Dr. Taylor and Dr. McLeod have attended training, and have been working through all of it. So we were, we scored a 15 out of 15. But one of the areas that we have to do a better job on, and we're going to go ahead and start this month with this item and move it forward, is you all need to be looking at the CSIP more and talking about it and evaluating what's on it. We know right now our CSIP is massive. It includes a lot of things that we're going to have to, as they pull it apart, push out to the building level plans. Do you want to talk about it more?
Yeah, so they gave us, they gave us an example of a CSIP that had four main areas. And as I was looking at it, I thought, the middle school's done a fantastic job with the three pillars and how they do their dragons of character, positive, yeah, positive office referrals. They fall under a family, a tradition, or an excellence pillar. I thought that reconfiguring our CSIP to follow that same design, family, tradition, and excellence, and then having our big rocks underneath each one of those pillars, and reducing, right now, we have a lot of building-specific information and building-specific goals in our CSIP, pushing that out to the building-level plans, and then having our district-level big rocks on what we want our district to look like and how we want it to improve. And then putting it in here allows you all to review it and see our progress towards improvement in those big rocks.
Yeah. With the new version of Board Docs here, we can do goal tracking, I think that's what it's called. So we'll be able to, in time, put the comprehensive school improvement plan in Board Docs so everyone can see it, and as we do agenda items, we track your progress at reviewing them and how the district's doing, trying to achieve those goals. But that is down the road. For now, we're going to upload our current version to DESI. We have to do that by...
It's done.
December. It's already done. And is it next year we start working through the modifications?
We're going to start because we have to upload a final. Since we received a 15 out of 15, we wouldn't really have to make any changes, but it's a big document, and we need to better, to better focus our district, we need to adjust it. So we're going to try to get that done by December and upload our draft to DESI by December.
Will we go through, like, a similar CSIP process next spring?
Are you talking about the review meeting? Yes. But since we're going to put it on the agenda, and my original thought was to do it quarterly, to do the family, the tradition, the excellence, and review it quarterly with you all, and then the fourth meeting would be that annual review meeting where everybody, community members, teachers, kids, everybody gets together and reviews.
That certainly keeps it top of mind.
Yes.
And when's the, I guess, the community member one, the everyone?
November? January.
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 Okay.
We typically bring it in February, but we may have to...
We might adjust the, it just depends on how the document comes together and how it flows best with the review by the board on those quarterly, so we might have to adjust that community meeting. It's a pretty quick turnaround, coming back from Christmas break and getting community members and everybody to come in and get together, so it might make sense to think about rescheduling.
And if you may express interest to us, contact you or...
Absolutely. Yeah. Give Dr. McLeod or myself a call. All right. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain. There's a young lady on the sub-list. She's great.
I'm stuck.
There's other people, too. I abstain from the consent agenda vote. Am I causing grief? I'm sorry.
No, that's, there we go.
We need to pray.
I think it was stuck. It was, like, frozen. Jim.
Did Jim make a note?
I mean, you discussed, oh.
That he...
Oh, no, I didn't.
You remember that?
I have to get to the vote yet.
Okay.
We didn't make it to the vote yet.
I'm sorry.
But that's okay.
You're okay if I go ahead and read the participation part?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Per policy, BDDH-1, Public Participation at Board Meetings, the following guidelines and procedures are followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment card must be filled out and submitted to the Board President prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual is permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. I had two comment cards submitted. The first is Mickey Fleeg. Mr. Bazler will have a clock up here for you.
And you can see it off to the right. I'll start when you start.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
We wanted to share with the board some concerns we had with the most recent Dragon's Digest that came out. There were some statements made that were either misinformation or lack of information on Page 6 concerning COVID-19. The first was a statement that the COVID-19 vaccines are the most intensive safety-monitored vaccine in U.S. history, including studies in adolescents. This statement, although CDC did state that, was later retracted or issued corrections by the CDC when a Freedom of Information Act was requested for the results of the surveillance. CDC admitted it gave false information about COVID-19 vaccine surveillance, including inaccurately saying it had conducted a false, a certain type of analysis more than a year before it actually did. The second statement of concern was even if kids don't exhibit, exhibit severe symptoms, they can spread the virus. This may be true, yet they can also spread the flu, a common cold, and other types of sicknesses, and shouldn't just be limited to a page about COVID. There are also articles from doctors explaining the misunderstanding of asymptomatic spread. Even Dr. Fauci says, and I quote, "Even if there is some asymptomatic transmission, in all the history of respiratory-borne viruses of any type, asymptomatic transmission has never been the driver of outbreaks. The drive of outbreaks is always a symptomatic person." The third area of concern is the box that is located on the bottom of Page 6 that has immunization requirements in it. There is no Missouri law that states a child has to have immunizations to attend public schools. We realize the Health Department sets rules, but in Statute 167181, Section 3, it states, quote, "This section shall not apply to any child if one parent or guardian objects in writing to his school administrator against the immunization of the child because of religious beliefs or medical contraindications. In cases where any such objection is for reasons of medical contraindications, a statement from a duly licensed physician must also be provided to the school administrator," unquote. So, Section 3 negates the statute for those who seek religious or medical exemptions. Parents should be made aware that they have options. If immunization requirements are being stated, then exemptions should be stated right alongside it for parents to know and make informed decisions. The last area of concern was a statement, "The more students and staff we have vaccinated, the less chance of spread of COVID-19 in our schools. Is there studies that show this? Especially now that we know the vaccinated can still get and transmit COVID. CDC just recently stated that the vaccinated and the unvaccinated are treated the same." These Dragon Digests not only went to parents with children in school, but also to all taxpaying residents in the county. Another reason to make sure information is accurate and that all information is shared and not just parts. We are grateful to have met with Bailey and Mr. Taylor last week, Tuesday, August 23rd, in a private meeting to go over these concerns, and they were very open to listening and looking at the information that we had left for them in a packet. And we're happy to share that same packet with any of the board members that are open to looking at it, which all of these statements above are in that packet. We are here to voice our concerns on these issues as stated above and to express our concern for the children and looking out for their best interest as parents, grandparents, aunts, and uncles, just as the rest of you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second comment card is from Melinda Fisher.
Good evening. I just basically have an invitation to the school board and the administration to a program that we are going to have presented by Dr. Mary Byrne at the St. Genevieve Community Center Sports Complex in Room B on Thursday, September 22nd at 6:00 PM. The presentation focuses on the MSIP 6, the accreditation standard that the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education uses to evaluate the school district. And I do have a card for each of you with that information in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on the agenda is the report of the superintendent.
Okay. And Board Doc, you have some notes of appreciation. My next item, I'm going to turn it over to the guy over here without a name tag. We're, we're ordering it, I promise. This is Dr. McLeod. He's our new Assistant Superintendent. He's going to talk about our professional development days for all employees, our back-to-school.
All right. So, attached on your Board Docs, you have the August PD Plan. As we went through and developed the PD Plan for August back-to-school days, we involved all personnel at different levels. We also went back and looked at different survey data, collected ideas on some of the events that maybe we weren't able to provide in previous years because of lack of time. And we also took into concern, or took into consideration some of the concerns of the board and also different members of our faculty and staff, as well as touching on some of the mandatory trainings that are required for our staff. So, if you look through it, some of the highlights, I'll, I'll kind of highlight for you. We had Alice Active Shooter Training with our SRO Officer Clark, and she was able to actually coordinate that with other law enforcement officials to kind of help us prepare for that. So, that's an active shooter training for everyone, and we're actually going to carry that over to some of our paras who were unable to get that in their PD in August. So, everyone will have gone through that training. Another highlight as far as safety goes is Dennis Lewis. He's one of the authors, or the author, of our Quick Access App for Safety, and he came in and he spoke about some of the research on safety and some of the protocols that we can use for safety. And that was a presentation, a three-hour presentation to all faculty and staff. So, custodians, teachers, paras, everyone was able to attend that. We had a kickoff with the keynote, Mr. William Martinez. He grew up in a, I want to use the correct language, in a Coda household.
He was a child of a deaf adult.
Thank you. And he had, he had an inspirational message for, for all the faculty, and he did it in a unique way through song. So, he gets up there and he starts singing, and people think, what are you doing? And then he talks about how he moved around from school to school, and even at the time, he didn't realize the impact that the teacher made, but later in his life, it was a quick interaction with a music teacher that said, you know what, William, you're a singer. And just that quick interaction with a teacher was able to boost his confidence, and he felt like he belonged, and he felt like he had a purpose. And he went on to star in a, maybe not star, but participate in a Broadway show even. And then he offered a breakout session, ASL, in the classroom that was well-attended by some of our teachers as well. They were able to use some of the information they learned there to be able to apply it to their classroom as well. Towards the end of that week, we were able to have some breakout sessions. And so, in those breakout sessions, our teachers were able to pick some topics that they felt like applied to their practice and they're most interested in. We're going to try to replicate that. One of the, some of the feedback I've gotten was that it was maybe more elementary-heavy, so we tried to respond to that with our next breakout session. So, we may have some more secondary-type PD as well. But then we also coordinated some building-level PD as well. So, we broke out one of the days where middle school was able to kind of hit some of their needs, and then Bloomsdale was able to kind of cover what they needed, and then the elementary and the high school as well. So, we're trying to diversify and give each, not each building what they need, but also just each employee what they need, because we're all at different levels of learning, and we all, all have kind of different roles. So, some of the PD that may be beneficial to me as a math teacher may not apply as well to a PE teacher. So, we're trying to make these PD days as valuable to our teachers and staff, so then, in churn, it's valuable for our kids.
William Martinez, it was really interesting, because he shared with us that his first language in life was American Sign. So, that was interesting to me. You know, I have a granddaughter, and I'm teaching her sign to be able to communicate, you know, eat, drink, or stop. So, so it was just interesting, because as he sung and he danced and he talked, he signed. So, that was, you know, it makes me want to go back and learn sign language.
And I had the pleasure of visiting Bloomsdale Elementary last week for a couple of days. I got to get in every classroom. One of, really, the, the key moments for me was, we went into the library, and Mrs. Carlson was giving some instruction to her students, and she was using the sign language that she learned in, in that session. And it's, when you think about it, it is actually another language, and it causes students to use a different portion of their brain. And if you think about being discreet, when a, when a student has to use the bathroom or when the student isn't feeling good, they can give the teacher just a quick sign, and the teacher can sign back, and nobody else needs to know. And that's what she was talking to them about. So, it honors the students and their privacy at times, too, using that kind of communication method. So, it was, it was really pleasant to see somebody taking that and using it immediately. So, kudos to Ms. Carlson.
I've heard nothing but good things about the speaker and, and that, that week, so it was well, well-received, so.
Jamie, I think it was like a Disney show, like, it was like you're in Frozen or something, so.
It's pretty interesting. It's interesting.
Thank you.
Um, next, I want to give you an update on the new door lock system. In my presentation, which is available on Board Docs, I did link the original proposal that you voted on in June. The update, Jason Bowman sent this email out. He's been heading and taking care of all of this. He's our Assistant Tech Director for the district. But on Friday, he emailed out that all the door locks should be operating on the St. Gene campus, and that SecureX, the company installing, was going to be at Bloomsdale on Monday. They were there? Okay. And they should have Bloomsdale done by the end of the week. And then, Mr. Gettiger, we are adding a door lock, so it's going to be a little bit more than what that proposal was. We're putting one on the playground. Is it the lower door?
It's the lower.
The back? Okay. Okay.
And I, I thought it would be a good idea, after we adjourned the meeting, there's a, there's one right out here. They, they work. I don't want to jinx this. After our last experience, but so far, it has been, the people on campus working are trying to do it right, trying to take their time, make it look nice, but it's really functional. So, we're really happy with it so far.
Yes. The next item I have, this is just informational. In Board Docs, you have access to our parent-student handbooks at each building and the athletic handbooks. And then, under the executive content, I've put all of the teachers' handbooks. Those handbooks contain some confidential information, safety practices and things that we internally talk about and discuss, but, you know, in case we would have a situation, someone meaning to do harm, we, we try to keep that confidential. You are supposed to see those handbooks every year, so that's why they're in there, and you have them this month. The other thing I, I threw in there was the support staff handbook. We transitioned this to an online document for all support staff members several years ago, so you have access to it in Board Docs, too. Next, Dr. Taylor's going to give you an update on Prop SG.
So, we're continuing to work with the architects. We had a meeting with our architects and Colin from Brock Miller. Two weeks, two or three weeks ago, we're meeting with them again Thursday of this week. We had some suggestions for drawings. I'm, I'm meeting with Building Administration, Dr. Nix, and some of the coaches to get their input and to get some suggestions from them. So, we're going to meet with them again on Thursday. We're in the process of geoengineering services. They've recommended an organization to start that work as well, on the ground, boring holes and getting that process started. So, we're underway. I anticipate a contract being finalized with Brock Miller by the end of this week, and we'll bring that to the board for signatures next month.
And I'll add, to be able to track all of this, I had an in-depth conversation with Courtney, which I have some more questions for you. From LJ Hart and Company, we're going to, we've created a project code at the end of all the accounts that we're going to use for Prop SG, and we created an extension code to show the first $10 million, and they'll create next year, when they pull the next 10, and a different extension code to be able to distinguish those two payments. So, and those two, all of those expenditures, just to be able to track the money better and know what's being paid for in Prop SG.
So, once the bonds are sold and we get through the contract with Brock Miller, we'll be able to discuss starting.
Yes. Can't wait.
That's exciting.
Yes. And then the last item, safety reports. There's nothing in the board packet this month. We did our first safety drill on Monday, and it went well, from the chatter I heard on the radio, so that's always a good thing.
That's good.
And that's the end.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $10 million of Series 2022 General Obligation Bonds.
We have with us members from LJ Hart and Company. Who's going to speak? Okay, I'll let you do the introductions.
I assume you want me to be up here, too, so you can hear me. Thank you. So, is Erin McManus, a senior financial analyst with our company, is passing out board packets that we're going to go over. I'm Courtney Wegman. I'm a vice president with LJ Hart and Company, and in front of me is Larry Hart. He is our chairman and CEO. I'm sure he will add in a couple of things here and there, either that I miss or Erin misses. But for all the board members, first and foremost, congratulations on 71% passing Prop SG. That's phenomenal. Of the 47 ballot measures, we had 44 pass, and you were one of them. So, it was a successful night for us and as well for you, too. As mentioned, we do have the first $10 million for the board to approve to lock in interest rates. In front of each of your packets, if you can take the clip off, I'm going to cover the first three items within the packet, and then Erin will take over the last three items. The biggest one will be the resolution, so that action item for the board to approve, so she'll go over a couple of things in there. So, starting off, first thing is the rating report. So, because the district participates in the Missouri Direct Deposit Program, these bonds do have a double A-plus rating, which is one notch below what the highest being, triple A. This is consistent with your other bond issues that you have outstanding, as well as previous financings that you've done that have been fully paid off. So, this was helpful when we marketed the bonds to investors, letting them know that it is at double A-plus because of that participation in the program. The next item, I'm probably going to spend the most amount of time on. It's in the paperclip, and it's labeled Schedule V. So, these are the actual maturity schedule with interest rates that the board can approve this evening. To point out, this, this wasn't just, okay, we're going to go ahead and pick a maturity and a schedule and go ahead and market it. There were conversations that were held with Dr. Fleeg, Dr. Taylor, Dr. McLeod, as well as Bailey, and then Larry and myself, to come up with the best structure and the best way with which to sell the first $10 million of bonds. You'll notice that principal starts in 2035 and goes out until 2042. So, whenever we were first having these conversations, it was a matter of, do we sell the longer maturities, these first, or do we look at selling some of these shorter maturities with the idea that maybe the local banks would be more interested in shorter maturity bonds than, say, the ones that are maturing from, you know, 35, 20, 13 years out to 20 years out? During those conversations, it was brought up that there's potential interest rate risk by selling the shorter piece. by selling the shorter piece, so looking at moving and doing those later maturities. The other item that came up was the uncertainty of assessed valuation and how that's going to play out, starting with the, I guess, May of 2023 being that first meeting, but is it actually going to occur? So by selling those later maturities, it allows for us to backfill the next $10 million with more knowledge, you know, a year, a year and a half from now, so as to best structure it. And when we get to the cash flow, we'll look at, well, does it matter as much with regard to the revenue sources and those assessed valuation projections? So on this debt service schedule, top left corner of the table, you'll see 9/13. So to your point, Ms. Trubova, when the money would actually be available, September 13th is when it's going to be deposited in the local bank account. You'll notice with this structure that each of those maturities have a 5% interest rate, a 5% coupon. This is the interest rate with which the district is paying interest expense to the investor. So this is the rate with which the investor is paid that interest income on a semi-annual basis. Similar to prior financings, we are actually selling these at a premium, which means that the amount that the investor is paying is higher than that par value. So if we go to page two, to point out that pricing summary, you'll notice that I have those same maturities, 35 out to 42. In the third column, we have that 5% coupon, which matches Schedule V. But then we have yields ranging from 3% to 3.2%. The gap between the interest rate paid of 5% and the yield, which is the interest rate that the investor realizes as of the first call date of March 1st, 2027, is what's creating that premium. The larger the gap, the larger the premium. So if we take, just looking at 2035, the first line moving across, the 5% to yield 3, we have that maturity value of $1,050,000. This is the actual amount the district will pay back, either upon a prepayment, a refinancing, or if it goes to maturity, which I doubt, at that time of 2035, March 1st. You'll notice that price, 108.301%. So as I had mentioned, the gap between the 5 and the 3 is what's generating that premium price, being that it's over 100%. It's meaning that the investor is going to pay 108.301%, multiplied by that maturity value. If we go to the very last column, the actual amount of money received is just over $1,137,000. Going two columns back, you'll notice a call date. So all of these bonds have a five-year call feature of March 1st, 2027, with a call price of 100%. So there's no, there's no penalty, once we hit March 1st of 2027, to prepay or refinance these bonds. If I go through that same process for each of the maturities and we compare the dollar price to the maturity value, you'll notice that the difference is listed under bid information, that reoffering premium or discount, $770,046. So this is the additional money that's generated over and above the $10 million. That's one, used to pay for your cost of issuance, so the closing costs, as well as have additional money that's deposited into your construction account. Now, I'm sure you did notice that that, there was that 5%, that's the coupon, the interest rate. One more thing, to go back to that first page, I do want to point out, is an effective interest rate. So even though the district is paying 5% to the investor, if we take into account the premium, under, under the table, there's three sets of boxes of lines. In that second group, you'll see bond yield for arbitrage purposes. This is the effective interest rate. So by taking into account those yields, the actual effective interest rate is 3.14%. So you're paying the 5%, but you're getting that additional money upfront, and as a result, it's that effective interest rate of just over 3%. Are there any questions on, on the structure? So going back to those initial conversations that we had on how we're going to structure it, we were projecting about $707,000 of premium. And due to some of the local support, and I'll let Erin talk about that, as well as being able to just overall price the bonds just slightly, you know, having those yields just slightly lower, it increased the premium about $63,000 from those projections. So from 707 to 770, with total interest expense number remaining the same, just because that gap was a little larger than what we were originally projecting. As far as, did you have a question?
When you're ready.
Okay. I'll answer it now, yeah.
Courtney, so I just wanted to clarify. In years past, of course, we've done refunding and refinancing.
Yes.
Due to, you know, lower interest rates and things of that nature that have benefited us tremendously.
Yes.
And we could still do that after five years here, but we're going to go ahead and lock in this interest rate because we're not probably in the same climate that we were.
If we were in the same climate, especially with construction costs being higher, even, let's just look at 2020 when the district did that refinancing, the most recent one. We had the same type of a structure, selling the bonds at a premium, but instead of the extra money being used for construction, it was to pay off some of the old bonds. At that time, that smaller gap, you know, helped out. But it's, you have that five-year, and so we would keep the coupon the same, that 5%. It's just looking at the yields or what we were concerned with by issuing the longer maturities now. If we'd, you know, if this, the longer maturities were a year from now and interest rates crept up, then those yields would have gone higher and there would have been overall less premium. Does that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does. It's a lot, but that makes sense.
Sure, sure. On page three, we have the sources and uses of funds. So it essentially summarizes the fact that we're, the district is selling the first $10 million. We have that reoffering premium being another source of just over $770,000. Using those total sources of funds, I'm going to skip the deposit construction fund for just a moment. We have our cost of issuance, so it includes the legal fees to bond counsel to prepare all the legal documents that we have this evening, assuming approval. The official statement preparation and printing expense, this was the prospectus that was prepared and includes information on the district, as well as your audit from your most recent fiscal year, so last year, 2021. Paying agent, registrar and trustee bank fees, $400 setup. This is the only item that is a recurring fee. So everything else are one-time fees with the financing, except for those registrar and paying agent fees. $400 initial setup and $300 each year thereafter, which is consistent with the fees that are charged for your other bond issues that are also outstanding. Then we have underwriting fees and underwriting expenses for LJ Hart and Company to purchase the bonds from the district and find investors to buy them. I will point out that we don't always keep all of that fee and most times we rarely keep all of it. We share it with other dealers as well as with some of the banks, depending upon who they clear and who they trade with, as well as if there are ever individuals that purchase the bonds, say for instance, if they have an Edward Jones account. The Edward Jones representative, in order for him or her to make money, they also want a portion of that. So we share that fee in exchange for them taking on those bonds to their individual investors, as a for instance. And then finally, the registration fee with the Missouri State Auditor, maximum of $1,000 in order to register the bonds with the auditor's office. So in total, after taking into account all of those costs of just over $130,000, which come out of that premium, on September 13th, the district will have deposited into their construction fund $10,639,846. Now, how are we going to pay for it? Well, we've already established there's a 44-cent debt service fund levy. So if we go to the first legal-sized sheet, I have two cash flows. This first cash flow, spreadsheet five, just includes this first $10 million. It's also assuming your assessed valuation, as it is for the last two years, with a 1.5% growth on the full assessed value, assessed valuation. So you'll notice that, starting in 2022, 23, we have the full amount of revenue. Well, we've already talked about, we, Dr. Fleege's already talked about the estimates for revenue to be collected. So I'm actually going to skip spreadsheet five and just go to spreadsheet 5A, using more conservative estimates. So reading left to right, I have that first assessed valuation of the actual figures, but then you'll notice a light green column. The third line down, I've reduced assessed valuation to about $590,000 to account for Mississippi Lime, as well as Lafarge Wholesome protesting their taxes. 590? Right. Oh, excuse me. 590 million, that's a bit different. Thank you. So those lighter yellow columns all assume the various revenue sources, so your debt service levy, some state assessed revenues, interest income, as well as merchants manufacturing, financial institutions, bringing that total into that dark yellow column. The next six light blue columns represent the existing payments, as well as that far column, the new payments for the Series 2022 bonds. I've also included in that yellow column, a projected repayment schedule for the next $10 million, to give a complete view of where the total bond issue can fit in. And this is just a sample, so that's why it's highlighted in yellow, because it's not to be approved this evening, just the column to the left, on how that's going to affect the balances. To make it easier to read, there's page seven, spreadsheet 5A, that blows up the revenues, the balances and the payments. The payments do include both of those assumed bond issues. And when we're looking at structuring and using these conservative figures, when we look at the balances compared to the payments, we do it on a diagonal basis, because the balance is as of June 30th. And thinking about the overall chronology of events, so you have your tax rate hearing, you make a September 1st interest payment, tax bills go out in November, December, the majority of your revenue will be collected, December, January timeframe, and then you have your larger payment in March. So just looking at the end of 2021, 22, the district had just over $2,100,000 within your balance. If we add in your revenues that are projected based upon that lower assessed valuation of just over $2.8 million, subtract out those payments that are to be made in 2022, 23, of just over $1.5 million, it leaves a balance of about 3.4. With the way that we have structured, just theoretically, the next $10 million, it's going to absorb some of those balances so that you're not growing exponentially within that account, because the idea was that the 44 cents can support the full $20 million. So for those next few years, we have the balances just slightly over or under each of the, the payments, up until you get to fiscal year 2029, 30. Now, obviously, there's going to be many conversations from now until the next $10 million on how we're going to structure things and what the overall long-range plans are for the district. So for instance, if you had other projects in mind, if you did another bond issue, perhaps we don't be so aggressive with the next bond issue and how we structure those bonds, knowing full that we can also refinance in a few years, ideally, or at least make prepayments. But if, if this were to hold true, both of these schedules, no refinancing, no prepayments, at that point in 2930 would be the next signal for the next new money bond issue, because your balances are starting to grow significantly higher than your payments. However, like I said, with the refinancings, potential prepayments, things can change, as well as accommodating what you want to do into the future. The overall message I wanted to make with this is that even with assuming a lower assessed valuation and being somewhat aggressive with the next $10 million, $10 million of bonds, the district can easily afford making those payments, assuming that 44-cent debt service fund levy, to stay in line with your ballot language of estimated not to exceed the 44 cents.
This is the worst case scenario. There's two refundings that will happen, most likely, and you might grow, you may end up with 700 million instead of 590 million, who knows? That's what, when we get it all settled, we can make the projections more realistic. This, what we're doing here is trying to make it work under the real negative assumption, the worst case.
Are there any questions on the numbers? And obviously, we're looking at them in a test tube, so my next item gives a more, more, a bigger picture of the overall municipal bond market. Okay. So with Exhibit 1, we have our comparison of interest rates. So I can talk about where the 5% and the yields ranging from 3 to 3.2, but my next question would always be, well, how does that compare with other financings that are currently in the market? Am I getting a good deal? Is the district getting a good deal? Is it comparable to other schools, other municipalities? So in the left column, it's in bold, we have the interest rates with each maturity for the district. So you see 2035 out to 2042. And again, just as a recap, so I'm going to pick 2036 as my year to compare. We have 5% to yield 3.05 with a 4.207. So the 5% is the interest rate paid to the investor. The 3.05% is the yield, the interest rate that the investor will realize as of March 1st, 2020.
Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Jalen Diesel?
Yes.
Martha Riesinger?
Yes.
James Kershaw. Motion carries 601. Next, we have new business. First item under new business is to set the tax rate.
So I will check one more time. Do, do any of you have questions for me? Okay.
I'll make a motion to set the operating levy at 2.9617 and debt service level at 4, or at 0.4400 for a total levy of 3.4017 for the 2020, 2022, 23 school year.
Second. The motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have adult food prices.
Yes. This was an item, this is an item we typically take care of in the summer, but we did not receive the calculation tool until our Food Service Director, Jordan Mueller, and our Administrative Assistant to Food Service, Lori Roth, went to their training earlier this month. So they came back and due to the federal pricing requirements, they are recommending, or we are recommending, that the adult breakfast prices be set at $1.95 and that lunch be set at $3.50.
And how much have been increased? Is that?
Breakfast is 10 cents, lunch is actually 20. I think the recommended, like if you look at the federal calculation tool, it's very high. It's like four, it's above 450.
Is this the floor then? This is as low as it can go?
We have to increase it every year, showing that we're trying to get to that. So this is just our, our yearly setting the rate, trying to approach.
And who would pay this if we're providing meals for our employees?
Well, breakfast and lunch are part of the benefit package for all employees, so the district pays for breakfast and lunch.
So, okay, so essentially paying, Erin?
Yes. Since we're paying, we don't have to actually jump all the way up to the, like $4, I think it was like 450, something like that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the adult food prices for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have evaluation report for coaches.
So Dr. Nix is actually going to present the next two items.
All right.
Okay. I could talk about this for 45 minutes, but I'll do it in 44 really quick. This summer, Dr. Boyd and I spent a lot of time on, basically just looking at the evaluation tool for my coaches, our coaches, and basically completely revamping it. This is my 14th year as athletic director, and I inherited the current evaluation tool and have continued to use the same one for the past 14 years, which is fine, except that technology has changed a lot, and we now have capabilities that we didn't have 14 years ago. So like I said, Dr. Boyd and I, this summer, took a look at the evaluation tool and revamped it, basically creating the opportunity now for me to do an evaluation from my phone through an app. And so I've done a few already. I can go to a practice, I can go to a game, and pull the app up on my phone and do the evaluation right there. And that evaluation automatically gets sent to the coach and to Dr. Boyd and to Mr. Schnabel, our assistant principal. So all three of those people will get the results of that. And it, the great thing about it is it continues to tabulate. So if I do four evaluations on a coach throughout the course of the season, when I do their summative at the end of the season, all of that is put into the summative. So it's much more technology-friendly and makes the old evaluation tool look very archaic. So like I said, Dr. Boyd was a tremendous help with this. He's much better at technology than I am, I'll admit that. But I'm very happy with where it is. It just allows me to be able to not only do a cumulative evaluation instead of just sitting down at the end of the season and filling out a form, but it also allows instant feedback to our coaches.
And your coaches had input into this?
Correct, thank you for asking that. I sent that tool out to our coaches and asked for any suggestions, anything that they felt like we needed to add, subtract, or change. And the only feedback that I got was the coaches thought it was a good idea and they liked it the way that it was.
And it mirrors a lot of the tools that we use throughout the district.
Right.
And is it a scale, I'm sorry, I'm prehorsed, 1 to 4, 1 to 7, what is it?
The scale is actually 1 to 5, with 1, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head here. 5, I believe, is, so 5 is the highest that you can get. And 5, starting at 1, sorry, 1 is, needs attention. 2 is approaching expectations. 3 is meets expectations. 4 is exceeds expectations, and 5 is, trying to remember what the exact verbiage is, but basically, it's a 1 through 5 scale with 5 being the highest. It's still new to me, too.
And it doesn't average of those scores? And so when he populates the summative at the very end of the year, if he does four walkers of his coaches, it will do an average of those scores that's included in that. Is it head coach, assistant coaches, all coaches?
All coaches, except for volunteer coaches, so all paid coaches.
Any other questions on that? I'll make a motion to update the evaluation report for coaches as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the 2023 Misha Dead Period.
Okay, so basically, what the dead period, the rules that go with the dead period, it has to be nine consecutive days, and it has to start on a Saturday and then on a Sunday. And it can be anytime from Memorial Day to the first day of fall practices. So basically, we have to pick a nine-day slot that starts on a Saturday, and we get to choose those nine days, but they have to be consecutive throughout the course of the summer. We have historically chosen the nine days prior to the first day of practice, mainly because there's also, on top of the dead period, a sports season dead period. So our fall sports season has a seven-day dead period. Our winter season, same thing, seven days. The seven days prior to the first day of practice is the winter dead season, and then same for the spring. So allowing, or doing it the nine days prior to the first day of practice makes those overlap, so we don't have to do 16 dead period days. We only have to do the nine. In addition, continuing to do it in that same nine day, the nine days before the first fall practice, it allows the parents to kind of have an idea of where it is, because I start getting questions, hey, do you know when the dead period for 2026 is going to be? Because people start planning their vacations very, very early. So as long as we can keep it on those nine days, it'll help our parents and our families out quite a bit, and it'll allow us to overlap those two dead periods. So my recommendation for the upcoming year is July 29th of 2023 through August 6th, with practices starting on August 7th.
I just want to thank you for doing this early every year. It used to not be this way. I mean, we've been doing this for 45 years or so now, but...
We used to set it in what, March?
Spring.
You used to set it when you'd set the calendar, February.
Your vacations are booked, and it's just, this is nice. So thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the July 29th, 2023 through August 6th, 2023 for the summer of 2023 Misha Dead Period for activities.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have adjournment to executive closed session. Ms. Diesel.
I'm going to let Mr. Bosler run tonight.
Would I just recommend an action?
Yeah.
Under revised Missouri Statute 610.021, I motion that the Board of Education adjourn to closed meeting with a closed record and closed vote after a short break for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items of business: Leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a public government body, hiring, firing, discipline, or promoting a particular employee's, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identical individuals at preparation, including any discussions or work product on behalf of a public government body or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups.
Roll call, focus. Second. Second.
Hang on one minute. Okay, I've got the motion. Okay, who made them?
I guess I did.
Yes.
Yes, I did. And was it Josh?
I mean, Josh, second.
Okay, and then roll call.
That's you again.
I don't see roll call.
You had a save.
Okay. There we go. Okay. Should I do that? I can do it, okay. Jamie?
Yes.
Bosler?
Yes.
Dave Bova?
Yes.
Me, Geraldine Diesel, yes. Josh Kettinger?
Yes.
James Kerschner?
Yes.
Martha Riesinger? Okay. Ananmas?
Motion carries, 70. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.